Alright.
Yeah.
I'd like to call the Town Act and Planning Board meeting to order on Thursday, August 18th at 6:00 PM. I'll stand for the pledge. You guys got a chance to go the minutes?
Yeah, just right on me.
Did you find anything quirky?
Sorry.
It's pretty straightforward.
Motion on the July 7th?
Motion to accept the minutes for July 7th?
Second.
I wouldn't have thought nothing. July 21st. Any mistakes? We don't have a hint on what he said tonight?
Motion to accept the minutes from Thursday, July 21st?
Twenty second.
All in favor? Alright, uh, we're gonna step off the agenda for a second, um, for motions that were made on last meeting for an airborne storage map and Bob's ugly bagels, we gotta sign their stuff. And then we'll get back to the agenda. What do you want? Whoever wants to come up first? Snooze or lose.
So there's, I have three of them, um, what I'll do is leave one of these signed copies with you, take the other two with me, and then I'll get it recorded and bring back a recorded version.
I think we haven't changed much, did we?
No, um, I can't remember, we updated this a bit or we, um...
But did you add the spill prevention onto this?
Um, I, it was in the, it was a condition, and we had to go over it with him before we could get our development permit as part of that.
Okay.
I think it's just a condition of the approval, it's not, um, not on the plan you guys voted to approve. Yeah, I don't think it's changed much since the last time we did so. We just added these proposed area calculations, proposed impervious surface, proposed grassed outdoor storage area, and then add the notes to reinforce that they have to abide by the all of D P's erosion control rules, soap fences and stuff out here, to kind of reinforce the condition here.
It's a date there. Eighteen, I know I just said eighteen.
Did you sign all three of them, Chris?
Oh, you just signed off.
Yeah, it would hurt.
We'll all sign.
I'm gonna get confused otherwise.
So then I can leave one with you and then choose where to. Just leave one for me to take back once they've busted.
You're keeping one for your own records too?
Yeah. Once it goes to the registry, it'll be recorded online for everyone. Pretty sure I have to start even wanting to do it without them out.
I told him I would, but didn't mean it, it's gotta be stuff in here now.
Did you guys end up getting the within two years on you, because, uh, correctly?
I don't think we did. I saw it in the minutes.
Right here.
What's this?
I knew it was just a, the two year, yeah.
Yeah. Whatever, I wasn't here, I was signing.
Just, yeah. I don't know why you wanted it, just in case.
Because it'd already been a couple of years, and we asked you to do it before, and during, so... Just give a timeframe, but done.
I know probably three of us drive by almost on a daily basis.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like when you go to closing and you just sign everything.
Yes.
You wanna be down at, like, page four, you stop running. I hope this is okay. And I'll leave one with you, just so you guys have your records of what transpired tonight.
He wants it made from you.
Thank you all very much.
Alright, thank you. Uh, next up would be Bob's ugly bagels.
How'd you do at that Renaissance fair, your subtle fair?
Very well, yeah, yeah. Did not expect that.
Amazing how many people attend that thing.
Yeah, they did two weekends this year.
Crazy.
Yeah.
That's not a side, yeah. Jumps.
That was their one.
That's one of those on that here.
They did better than they acted fair. That's what I was thinking, judging from the traffic.
Yeah, two weekends this year, it's crazy.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, back to, uh, old business, Anthony Albanese, 249 Seventh Street, map 151, lot 028. Application for greatest practical extent.
Target set here for, uh, 249 Seventh Street with practical extent. Uh, review, I guess, of the site visit you guys did today.
So Chris, you weren't here, but that pipe is for the other property, but there is a drainage, um, up at the top of the driveway, top of the stairs, not top of the driveway, top of the stairs, where this hand is pointing, and it actually goes under, um, under all this concrete and straight out to a pipe, right, discharging into the lake right here, um, which we have discussed about removing that and finding a better means of, um, dispersing the stormwater.
Yeah.
So that was, you missed that YouTube, Gavin.
Was that the pipe that we saw in the picture?
Well, there's two pipes, there's two pipes right here, but one belongs to the Albanese property, and one belongs to the name, to the butter.
Alright. The one that shows up in the picture?
That's the butter, yes.
Okay.
It's quite a slope, you know, going down, and it's all paved, so it's all rushing down to that drain, so that's going directly into the lake.
That drain is just where my person would be. It all, all the water flows right to a catch basin right here.
Yeah.
Um, into that pipe, and... Yeah. You know, it just comes rushing down this flow luge.
So you can, um, when you take up the concrete pad and the concrete under the deck, how can you, um, catch the water there? Because we're gonna have you eliminate that pipe, obviously, to...
Yep, yep, we can, uh, we'll eliminate the pipe from, basically from underneath the concrete to the water, and we will naturally put crush stone in that area, but I do wanna keep the water away from the, the foundation, so naturally compact in the area in there of probably gravel, to keep the water away from the foundation, but then we'll fill in with crushed stone. There is a little bit of a retaining wall that we kind of noticed there when we did the walk around, that front walkway will come out too, and that little, um, retaining wall may stay there to actually hold the gravel and the crushed stone in that area, um, and then we can do natural vegetation on top, and that way, we can actually kind of use it as a catch basin for the stormwater that's coming off that pavement.
You good with that? Yeah.
You got this one?
Yeah. We can eliminate that pipe going direct to the lake for sure, um...
Is it a general rebuild, what if, like, what triggers?
Foundation's saying knocking it down, gaining a little on the lock coverage, um, distance from lake remains the same.
Yep.
Um, and within the thirty percent, um, growth allowance.
Retaining wall behind the existing structure right now, it's about forty to fifty inches high, with a pump station right there for the septic, that's what was put in in the early nineties, I believe.
In this picture.
Ninety-three, yes. Good.
Do you feel like you'd wanna physical, uh, stormwater plan, or just, just put it as sort of a condition?
Yeah, I was gonna make, I was gonna make it a condition.
Yeah, because we want something in.
Yeah.
On paper.
Is there any way to get the water to go off of the driveway before it gets all the way down there?
I don't know if they could, wanna make some cuts in, maybe put some of those rubber diverters in there, but we can't push it to the other neighbor either.
They should.
Yeah, it's not, not convenient.
Just like a little divide if he's, you know.
All paved.
Yep, everybody. They probably had to, to hold it.
The drain's not in the picture, probably should have had one, um, they did a site visit, but it's actual, it's a street drain, square, that's right, pretty much on the right side of that retaining wall right there, just gonna try to leave that where it's already been pitched and angled right into that, and then that would all come down right beside that wall, and then it would come into that area where I would fill it with crushed stone, and, which is pretty good size, I remember, I think it's like eighteen by, eighteen by, uh, yeah, twenty by eighteen, I think, it's a pretty good area where I'm gonna take the concrete out, um, and then fill in with crushed stone, um, I'm gonna guess it's gonna be, you know, fourteen to twenty yards anyway, so I can put it in that area, um, that would, you know, allow for a pretty good sized catch basin for any stormwater that's coming down filtering through at that point.
Yeah.
I didn't need that question, again, I do wanna say from my practical building experience, I'm gonna angle that away from the foundation, so there is not, you know, so everything kind of stays away from the foundation as well. But I, you don't want it, on my work, I don't wanna be getting wet.
You get a lot of water sometimes.
It does, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a driveway that I don't, um, I'm not sure how long it is right now, but I can look that up, I might have that, um, but the, the, above his driveway is the same thing, they got one little area, but they got another paved driveway right there, um, as well, that is on, that he's got drainage on that side, kind of, that he's done on as well.
And that area is under the deck, is that what it is?
Yeah, it's currently paved, or pavers.
Yeah, well, it's laid in.
Yeah, so that'll come out, and again, he'll slope it away from the house, but gravel, stone, natural vegetation, so that should help.
Yeah, and they do have, at the top of the driveway, they do have, where the street is, I don't know if you guys saw that, but he did put in a curb there, so anything from the road does not go in, and there is a, there is a drain on the side, on a couple houses down, that nothing from the road area, uh, square, square feet area, goes into that driveway, either, either of those driveways, for that matter. Can't quite see it almost, huh, it's right there, at the top of that.
Yeah, so the only water comes from?
From the street at all.
The driveway itself, not, not on the street. But he's taken up all that concrete and turning it into vegetation at the... At that walkway again. Yeah, one, yeah.
Which one, the wrong one?
Third one in.
Third one in?
Then the next one, yeah.
There you go.
All that concrete down bottom.
All this is coming up.
And underneath that deck, there's actually a couple steps underneath that deck.
Here, and all the steps, yeah. And put it back to a natural state.
And the walkway's coming back too, and being reclaimed.
I don't have my stuff, Chris, to come in, but it's like thirty, I think it's thirty.
Yeah, thirty-six to thirty-three. So gain a little.
Yeah, not that much, just wanna be twenty percent, right?
Well, yeah, but on that lot.
You said all this is coming out as well?
Yeah, it is, yep.
He's gonna still create something because he's gonna have a slider there.
I do, yeah.
A sliding glass door.
Not cutting into the foundation, just pulling the block out, put a, and then take this land, I guess, and make a walkway, natural walkway down to it, bring it up to a level, probably that door, that's where the foundation is.
Some nice erosion cells.
But all, all grassy and...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I may need help with this condition, but we'll try it. Uh, I move we approve the application for greatest practical extent, uh, for 249 Seventh Street, um, which is a teardown, uh, with a condition to eliminate the drain pipe, runoff pipe to the lake by using gravel, um, stone, and natural vegetation, uh, under the deck and where the concrete pad, uh, currently exists, that's coming out. It's a long one.
Right. Maybe put those numbers in there.
Which?
The thirty-six to thirty-three, or whatever it means. Put those, you know...
Yeah.
Reduce impervious to X number.
Yeah, the concrete's a hundred and sixty square feet. Well, the calculation is, he goes, um...
Right.
So then, the second condition would be the, um, project will reduce, um, the, you know, lock coverage from current thirty-six point one seven percent to, um, at least thirty-three point eight percent lock coverage.
Thirty-six point, what was the first number?
Thirty-six point one, seven.
Thirty-three point eight?
To thirty-three point eight. Got it?
Is that removing the pipe to the use of the?
Yeah, we, uh, like, that was the first part.
Pretty much replacing all removed concrete with gravel, sand, natural vegetation.
Yeah.
We have a motion, right?
Yeah, just wait on a second.
I second that condition.
All in favor of the conditions?
All abstained, because I didn't, I didn't go on the sidewalk or look at the application.
Four, uh...
One oh one. Four zero.
Four zero, there.
Four oh one abstained.
What's that?
All set? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Alright, next up is David Peppin, mineral extraction, H Road, lot 220 dash zero zero seven, and Westshore Drive, lot 221 dash zero zero three, application for mineral extraction.
Yes, good evening. I'm back.
Listen to that.
Lucky, that's so lucky you, huh?
I don't know if you guys are happy to see me or not, I can't tell.
Nice to see you, Matt.
Oh, nice to see you too.
So if you wanna refresh us and...
Yes.
Update us, I mean, some of us have written into it a little here and there, a lot of reading, brief intervention.
Um, so we got the burnable pool studies done, um, on both properties, and we had the plans revised in accordance with the studies, um, so we now have all of our wetlands delineated, um, all of our burnable pools delineated, and we've got a full comprehensive plan set here. Um, the result was, didn't really change too much on the plans, um, before, when you came in the entryway, um, if you remember, you're coming down H Road and the proposed entrance is across from, um, kind of across from Landscape Depot, um, is chasing, can you see it right there?
Jump on the computer if you want.
Okay. So this is the entrance right here, um, here across from Landscape Depot, and then you come in, they propose a, um, small garage here for maintenance and some, um, equipment, and then you come up, and had been sort of drawn that there were two separate areas, um, and had, was there a storage area here, which would have been used for storing, like, the loom that you brought onto the site, um, we were shooting to try to be able to bring in, like, some gravel from offsite to just mix or, or whatnot, and then there was a, a little wash area for a small wash plant, and as a result of the burnable pool study, that kind of squeezed off a little bit of this area, so we made some minor changes where the wash plant area and the area where we bring in some offsite material is all kind of right here right now, um, together. There's another plan sheet that Jason has, that might be a little easier to see, oh, here we go, okay. So now you come in, we've got like an area here we propose to be able to wash some aggregates, um, and also be able to bring in certain offsite materials for processing, um, this is outside of the aquifer protection district, this line right here shows where the aquifer protection district is, um, but other than that, the plans really didn't change, um, much at all, we still have the same primary extraction areas that we're, um, looking to get, one is here, um, second one is on the other side of this, um, stream, uh, here, this is along Westshore Drive, and then the third one is a small area, smaller area, um, right here, which, this is about fifty acres, as I recall, um, so we still have the same three, um, extraction areas, and then kind of like a processing area right here, um, and a garage, but, uh, essentially nothing really changed too much as a result of the burnable pool study, um, and we're excited to try to, uh, site walk with everybody. To get you out there to see it.
The, um, special burnable pool, I think it's special, what is the distance you have to stay away from that, is it two hundred and fifty feet? It is.
Yes.
So, on this document, is this line the two hundred and fifty foot line? So on this document, is this line the two hundred and fifty foot line?
Uh, that is a two hundred and fifty foot offset, yes.
So that could be there.
I'm a little confused.
You're within the two fifty.
Little confused about that myself, why it looks like that. Is there, um, another plan sheet that we can maybe look at, Jason? Shows that.
And the same thing down in that area where you want to mine, it appears to be that this is the two fifty line.
Oh, okay, so you can develop up to, um, twenty-five percent of a vernal pool area? So the engineers have calculated it so that, um, we can disturb with a D E P, um, notice, um, up to twenty-five percent of the vernal pool buffer. So that's why it would appear that those areas are, well, they are infringing in the buffer. Um, but per state law, you're allowed to take twenty-five percent.
Is that part of the state law?
You got more coming, John, if you want. Everybody gets a fresh copy of that.
Jason, I already got.
Has everybody had a chance to work through these materials already?
All I looked through thoroughly was the book and these drawings that were given to us. I, I haven't seen the rest of the package or the updated package.
Just got one.
Yeah.
So, yeah, then most of the passing around. Yeah, sorry. Tonight wasn't just to really dive into my, it's more of like, let's make this a sidewalk plan. Um, I want, um, a consultant here, who will, who will start really asking some questions pertaining to this, so that he's involved in. He had an obligation already for, for tonight, so I hope he may be there. He will be here on some.
So we need to schedule a sidewalk. We're ready for a sidewalk.
I, uh, last time I was here, we were close to doing one, but, um, I think the reaction from everybody was that they wanted to see the vernal pool study completed. Um, so I feel like we're, we're there now and we're ready.
From what I recall for all our discussion, what we were waiting on was that, was that marked out? So we know what we're looking at?
Yeah. Yeah.
So I suggest we, yeah, let's get.
What's, what's flagged out on the ground now that we can look at in terms of this?
Ooh.
Do you have the buil- building laid out, wash areas, anything like that?
I've got to look back at my notes. I know the wet, I'm almost a hundred percent sure that the wetlands were flagged, because I asked them.
When they did the survey, they would do that, right?
Yeah, I asked them to do that, um.
How about buffers, did they do buffers when they?
Buffers were not, um, flagged.
So like this one, one vernal pool up toward the wash and stockpile area. It's likely the pool itself or that, you know.
Yep.
The entity is flagged out, but that the buffer isn't.
Okay, that sheet right there, right there.
Good example, right?
So that vernal pool, shh, I'm gonna have to look back, but I believe that that would be all mapped out. The wash plant area is not mapped out.
Right, and like the aquifer protection line, is that gonna be, will you have that on the ground for us?
I will not unless, and if, if you need me to do that, um.
Well, it just seems like you kind of have more, less area there than you thought. To work with maybe.
Uh, I think it was, I think it was the equivalent of like ten acres right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'll be enough. You think?
It's a.
I mean, you need some room, I mean, ten acres.
I mean, the whole property is like five hundred acres, so it looks small on paper, but it's a pretty big, good sized area.
I know you're saying that they allow you up to twenty-five percent within the two hundred and fifty.
Yep.
But taking all that chunk out of one side. I'm a little concerned. From this high point to this low point. Area.
Okay.
Is there any chance we could get this part of that? Line?
Yeah, we could, um.
Yeah, we should really figure out what we want to see on the sidewalk, because.
Right.
Well, we had, John had two concerns, that one there.
Yeah.
And if they could at least flag.
Yeah.
That area of the vernal pool with it. Two hundred and fifty foot mark is in where you might be. Would be the two areas, I guess.
Okay. Just, just in.
Not everything.
Right, just in this area right here with the.
This area up here. Yeah, into the. Can I take a pause here and ask what we're, I gotta write this down because I gotta clear it down quickly. So make sure he gets it. Um, so what are we asking?
We're asking him to flag the two hundred and fifty foot, um. The leeway around the vernal pool. This area here, not the whole thing, just this, what is that? Northwest? I'm not sure how this map is going to be.
Usually north south.
Um, you're, you're, you're going north right now.
Okay, around this area right here.
Correct, yeah.
Northwest. Wherever it is that one thing feels on.
Like this cir- like this weird circle right here, does that, can I flag that? Like the, the moon shaped.
This, the two fifty?
That, right?
Yeah, the two fifty.
Yeah, flag that.
From about here to here.
Yeah, right.
Where twenty-five percent is.
This is what we're looking for, is where this line is gonna end up in reference to that line.
Yeah.
And then the other one down by the state.
Yeah, and down.
You're trying to put this other one down here?
Yeah.
Is that the one you said? No.
The resource protection district before they're putting the road in.
Down further.
That's where we gotta get that mapped out.
Yeah.
Scroll down a, yes, small amount.
This, this can, the area down in here where they're gonna do extractions. Was where the other one was. Yeah, kind of, where the vernal pool perimeter is and.
Hundred percent, yeah.
That affects where the areas that you say might be.
Right, right, like that. Where those areas cross. Yeah, yeah.
Can you scroll down?
Uh, go to the other map.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If it's possible for me to put that in like a GPS or something, would that be acceptable? If I had like the points in a GPS out there? Um, or do you want to see it like physically flagged?
Do you guys?
Well, I feel like it's gonna have to be physically flagged on the ground for them to be constructing in there anyway. They're gonna have to do it in order before they start leveling.
So these two, these two, two fifty, we need anything. So again, look for a lot of snowman, I guess.
Well, the resource protection district too. Right. Which isn't, isn't a different color, because this is a vernal pool of the map.
Yeah. And I, I got a question. Your study called that a S V P and your, your. Charts don't reflect that.
That was, what was the story behind that? They determined that was not, they determined with the state that that was not a significant vernal pool. The reason was is because it was a manmade, um.
Your own study said it is.
Nah, I've got some other stuff that we just submitted here, I think, um, from Flycatcher and. I, I need to have the engineers here, like, for these more in-depth conversations. I'm trying my best to answer these questions, but I'm not getting them a hundred percent. This was done by a certified engineer, so he has an answer. Um, but it, from what I remember, I think we, we determined that it was manmade. Um, okay.
So in a nutshell, all the ones in pink are significant?
Yeah.
And others are just blended in with the other wetlands?
Right, and I don't think that the buffers are marked, Gavin, I think it's just the wetland itself.
Well, let's see, the only ones identified as vernal pools.
No significant.
Significant.
They're the ones with the two fifty.
So if I go out there and find the vernal pools and I take a tape measure in two hundred and fifty feet from the vernal pool and put flags in the trees. Is that good enough or, because I, it's gonna be expensive to have a surveyor go out there and hack a line through the woods for that many flags. Um, but I could go out with the tape and I could like.
You're gonna have to do it bef- before you extract in there anyway.
Well, not, unless, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it for where those vernal pool buses were, because we're gonna be, we're hoping to develop in those areas. I would be for the limit of extraction. For the edge of the gravel pit, yes. But I would not be for the buffer for the vernal pools.
Well, not the three hundred and sixty buffer, but at least the, you know, it'd be, it would be the side that you'd be extracting on, you'd have to delineate it there so you. So you could determine your twenty-five percent. I mean, someone's gonna have to lay it out on the ground eventually.
I think the surveyor would go in and just mark up the, the edge of the extraction area. We typically would pay for that when we're doing a survey, but we wouldn't.
Well, maybe we should get that done so we can see what, before we go in there. And they, they could.
Yeah.
They could.
That's.
I mean, I, it's gonna be, these things, it's when you go in there and it's hard to, to know exactly what you're looking at, because it's a. You know, forested habitat at this point. Have you, have you done clearing in there yet?
I could talk to Rodney and see if it's a way that we can put this all in a GPS. And he could, he's gonna be with us out there, he's the environmental guy.
Yeah.
That work, if he had a GPS and had the plans on it and like, could, we could just identify spot for spot where we are.
If he can show us.
Yeah, because I think a survey is gonna be hard to, in, in a short amount of time, a, a survey is gonna be hard to get.
We're not asking to do anything out of the ordinary.
No, that was done on the, um, the pit on Westshore Drive.
Yeah.
That I, I, because I walked that bit and it's all, there's green stakes out there that show the resource protection.
Yeah, yeah, we had a lot of every.
That would work for me because simply I'm looking at a topography.
Yeah.
And, um, how water runs, where it goes, things like that. When you start tearing up the soil, what's gonna wash away, what isn't.
Yep.
Looking at high points here, right, washing down, all these vernal pools are in the lower areas. So anything you're doing outside of those vernal pools have a tendency to run into them. So that was my concern.
Yeah.
Another one especially. Because you can actually be out there washing stuff. That you're at the top of the hill, everything's running down. So being able to see that on the ground, however you want, was, that's my curiosity, but.
Okay.
Concern, I should say.
I mean, there's definitely a lot of erosion control measures that need to be put in place when you start excavating, but it is, everything is designed to be internally drained, um, at the end of the day. So that there's, you know.
I'm sure a lot of it's covered under codes and.
Yes, yeah. It has to, the final reclaimed gravel pit has to be all internally drained, so there's no water leaving the site. But when you first start to excavate, yes, you have to be very mindful of, you know, erosion control, um.
Makes sense, until you got a hole.
Until you have a hole, yeah, yeah.
You've got to hunt the lakes, wait for the stream and open. Weird areas.
That's why I'm not that concerned with this one, but I am with the other one, because you're not extracting anything. You're just doing operations.
Right.
Hilltops.
How long do you think you'll need to get this set up so that they can, they can have it?
Probably need about two weeks for him to get everything loaded up into like a controller, like have like a file that he puts into a controller. And.
I want to see it on the ground.
Yeah.
Because I, I still, I mean, like the resource protection district with the roads going through and the resource protection buffer. I mean, we need to look at this road specifically and I. It's nice to be able to see a line, you know, not just be like the guy standing where X point is and then now he's standing where Z point is. It's not the same as seeing a physical, you know.
Can you pin coordinates?
What's that?
Can you just pin coordinates?
Yeah, we can do that. We can have the lines all in a GPS that you'll be looking at, like you'll see the whole, all the buffers. You know, and you can also ping specific coordinates as well.
On the ground, I mean.
On the ground.
When we're there.
Pin them?
Yeah.
Oh, I think you said ping them, okay. Pin, pin.
No, little flags.
I do not have a problem with, um, yeah, putting some in. Um, I just don't want to have to go in there and hack, hack through the woods for, you know, twenty-five hundred feet, putting flags out. If there's like certain areas that you guys want to see, then we can definitely.
Has the resource protection area been flagged out during this, uh, wetland survey?
The wetlands themselves, yes, were flagged, but the two hundred and fifty foot buffer was not flagged. But if you want to, like, where you're talking along here, like I said.
I thi- I think we should do, I mean.
We could go out there, we could find where the wetland was flagged, we could tape, tape measure, go out anywhere, like you on site where you're like, oh wow, I want to see how far the buffer is right here.
Right, it's a lot of ground for us to cover and how many times can we straight stretch the tape?
Yeah.
And how vegetated is it, I mean.
Right.
Right.
It doesn't, if it was cut out years ago.
Well, it could be thick young growth and a lot of areas.
Some of it, yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of different areas. See too, I'd love to see the, you know, like this, the stream crossing, does the, I mean, how, what do we want to see now out there? Is it more just the center of operation and the building and locations and, uh, approximate wetlands? Or is it like wetlands throughout, throughout all the extraction area? You know, how extensive, uh. A walk are we talking about?
Is it gonna be a one walk or?
I would say multiple.
Well, I definitely think we should see that.
One for Westshore at least.
You want to section this off, yeah?
Well, I mean, it's just.
One extraction site area and the wash area for one walk. Maybe this extraction area down here for a second walk. Something like that.
What do you think, Matt, do you think we could do it in one day?
Couple hours.
If we had three hours, I think we could, four hours, and probably four hours. If we're, if we're walking the whole thing. But my dad does have a side by side and we, he could buzz people from one end to the other pretty quickly if, if anybody, I don't know, I, I don't.
How's his driving?
I don't always trust him either when he's driving, to be honest. It would be a lo- it'd be like, it'd probably take about four hours.
Yeah, we'll break that into two, I think.
I'll take my Jeep Grand Cherokee out there when I'm riding that.
So can you take a Jeep through there or something like that?
You can, yeah, you can, um, if you, you can get from like, you can almost connect, um, H Road to Westshore Drive. With the, the road that we have proposed, it's like on an existing trail. So.
I'd be willing to take, take my Jeep, bring my Jeep.
It's not the one.
Trail cuts over the shaft, I mean.
It is, yeah.
Just to save some time from site to site.
That's what I was just thinking about.
Um, so how much time can you do at least gets? If we do it with one or two, if we do it in the two. What sections do you guys want to go first? Um, and so you can concentrate on that.
I would say that area where they're gonna do the wash in those two extraction areas.
The road, the resource protection and the wash is probably a good.
Okay.
Maybe we could do this one too.
On the same road?
Well, this, kind of this arc.
Yeah.
And then save these for part two.
Yeah.
There's definitely not as many points of.
Right, and those two.
In- interest, so to speak, on the Westshore side. I mean, the one, the one vernal pool was declared insignificant, I guess. No, it's on the other side, right here. On the Westshore.
I probably need more time to go through this, because they have vernal pool records.
You can see the other side. Whatever, yeah, I, I feel like most of the time it's on the first.
They actually have all the photos. Haven't had a chance to review that.
I'll be needing for it ten days, I'll, for, for you, two weeks, you said?
We need to know how long is, you know, when it's gonna be.
I said if we were gonna do, we were gonna do like, um, something on like a GPS thing, like an iPad probably, with like. All the shape files in it, where you can see everything right on the iPad and you have like your GPS location. That would take two weeks, but if we're looking for a more comprehensive survey, I think that might take longer, surveyors are busy right now.
I don't think.
Well, he could use that program to flag it. Well, he could use that program to flag it on the ground, right?
Yeah, but I'm just saying that's like a lot more groundwork for a surveying crew and that might take like a month, if not longer, I'd have to check with like.
I think you gotta get that work done anyway before you're in there harvesting timber and everything.
I know, but I don't wanna spend a ton of money on doing a boundary survey if I don't know if those are gonna be the boundaries or not. You know, that's a fifteen thousand dollar survey just for that area.
No, I understand what you're saying, but I don't wanna go in there and not know what I'm looking at.
If you show me a few areas where you're specifically interested in and you want me to get some flags out there, I can do that, um, for sure. I'm just not, I just don't wanna pay for like a crazy survey out there, but if you guys identify exactly what you.
Yeah, so where they all, where the one hundred and fifty foot, two hundred and fifty foot marks overlap your operation, area of operations, I think.
Yeah, okay.
And the resource protection.
Okay.
So let's be more specific about it.
This part right here, wash plant.
That area, yeah.
Where their proposed wash plant area is overlaps is burnable pool.
Yeah.
Yep.
This one here.
Where you're going to encroach.
Where your, your boundary overlaps the burnable pool.
Okay.
That's the areas we're concerned with, right?
Right, and the resource protection area and the road.
This one?
Yeah, the boundary on that and the road.
It's, yeah, it's pretty much this, this thing right here.
Yeah.
It's, but I'd love to see a map where it was defined and then, this should be on the ground already, we just need, need the buffer in the vicinity of the road. Where the road lay in correspondence with the resource, and the resource buffer.
That's a seventy-five foot buffer, so could we just use the flags that are already there and just take a tape measure? And measure seventy-five feet?
Well, somebody can, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I gotta turn, put a flag in, when they do.
You're good with me doing that, Gavin, if I can do that before you guys come down, you know, just.
Why not?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be a lot of expense, we just can build.
So for the first two blocks, I have the, the burnin driveway, wash plant, burnable pool buffer, uh, resource protection along, um, mark, mark the resource protection around the driveway, the, the entrance, is that where it is?
Well, the, 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 the tote road that goes from the entrance down into the smaller extraction area. Cause that's proposed to be going through the resource protection district, so we need to view it to see if there's any other viable alternative.
Can you point it out?
That falls an existing road that's there.
You wanna do all these, right, hills, one chunk, one mark here?
Yeah, it should be easy to see the road itself.
And save this for a second walk.
Right, buffer lays over the road or how, where, how, where the resource ends in correlation with the road.
Right, you wanna, yeah.
All that, I mean, that's.
So this extraction area all the way up to here.
Yeah.
Well, one sidewalk.
And the wash plant.
Yeah, well, we could do the wash plant in this area.
Go to the other side.
Yeah, we could maybe.
And then these extraction points on the second walk, maybe, right?
Does anybody care about the, um, proposed right of way to the, um, interior donated parcel?
Yes.
You wanna see that or?
Yeah.
Is there something there right now?
There's a gate right there.
Oh, there is something.
Yeah, there's a gate, there's a gate right there, right where that would, that would likely be coming in.
Yeah.
Across the street from the parking lot for Goat Hill. Yes, yeah, yeah.
Well, having heard what we wanna see, what do you think would be the best approach?
Tell me what you wanna see for flags and if I can just go, if you're good with me going out there and measuring off the wetlands and showing the offsets, then.
I mean, as far as getting, have more time on the second visit to get more things done.
True, yeah.
What, what do you think would work best for you?
Probably starting with the wash plant area, might be, might be good.
So can we do the entrance to the wash plant, that burnable pool area right there?
Burnable, right there?
So if we do, if we do this area here and then, and then this, you think that's too much or you wanna just?
What if we do just this entrance area, because that seems to be the biggest concern, and then we can look all the way up to the wash area first? And then leave the extraction areas for a second walk?
I was asking him, what he could get done.
Well, what we could also do is set the date and then as much as he's gotten done at that time, we'll view and then anything else will come back.
I'll do whatever. Tell me what you want, I'll get it.
It's gonna be as bad as.
What do you, what do you, how, how you want on these two weeks?
Yeah, two weeks.
Our next meeting is the first.
Okay. When, when would you be, you guys do your sidewalks on Saturdays, is that right?
Well, this one.
Well, this would be a Saturday.
Yeah.
This would be a Saturday, okay.
Yep. Then a couple hours, huh?
Um, what is holiday weekend?
Well, yeah.
Is tomorrow?
Yeah, the fifth is Labor Day. Not coming with that.
Push those things, week, but then they, you'll be ready for the next meeting.
Cause I only get one Saturday before next meeting for you, or I only get twenty or twenty-seven.
Twenty, can you do the twenty-seventh?
Does that give us enough time to announce it?
I don't have to announce that.
Probably don't. Yeah, but does that give them enough time to fly?
That's what the question is.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll give me.
I'm not available on the twentieth.
That's right.
Twentieth is not good. Twentieth isn't good.
No, twenty-seventh. You got work for you, John?
I can do it on the twentieth.
So we're doing a sidewalk Saturday, the twenty-seventh, at what time?
Great.
You wanna start at nine, for the size of it? Or you wanna start earlier, eight, seven?
You're going the wrong direction.
Oh.
Nine o'clock's fine with me.
Does that work for you, Gavin?
Wanna help me with some surveying?
I can.
As long as your current surveyor doesn't get upset.
I can do it.
That's why anybody's told.
Oh boy.
I have to go to Atlanta, Orlando, Florida, in October, we're leaving somewhere near the end of.
It's a good thing we're talking about August, right?
Right, yeah, I mean, in October.
So, and what are we gonna, what did we settle on for the twentieth, just so?
The wash plant.
Wash plant entrance.
See something, but.
Yeah.
Maybe something going back.
We're, we're doing the entrance up to the wash, the entrance, the resource protection and up to the wash plant.
Yeah, that seems to be our major concern is that.
Well, this after, we'll start with that, um, if more questions can be, if you want more flagged, then you'll have to do a little bit more work, cause we're definitely gonna have to go back for a second one, so.
Can we set a date for that now?
For the second one?
Yeah, possibly September tenth, which is the weekend after Labor Day weekend.
We can set it at the next meeting for September tenth, probably do.
Yeah, so we'll meet on the first, and if you think you'll have it to be done by the tenth, then we'll set it down for the tenth.
Yeah.
Right, so right now we'll just leave it open, but.
Wait, so we're doing the twenty-seventh and the tenth?
Twenty-seventh.
Yeah, I know. Nine AM.
And possibly the tenth.
Possibly tenth, okay.
Better if, if everything works out, we can have it held on.
So he knows the areas of concern, the more he can get mapped out on the ground.
Yeah.
Does that work for you?
That works for me.
All right, I will just give you, I'll shoot you an email tomorrow, um, before you, before we need, so I'm just gonna go over this one more time. We want the road and driveway marked out, uh, wash plant, burnable and buffer, uh, resource protection buffer along, uh, each road.
Yep.
How about the aquifer protection line? And that's right in that same vicinity.
I thought they were out of it.
Well, it's right, they're right next to it, so it'd be. It would be just so we could view the space between the pool buffer and the aquifer protection. Up here, that's right, how big it, you know, I mean, that, it's thickly, we wouldn't really go to see that.
I'll put it, I'll put it in the memo if he gets to it.
Kinda comes down to anything that's crossing each other, you know, you know, if we're, get two different things going on in the same area, we can just see.
Like intersection points?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where, where these things are gonna happen.
Yeah. Okay. Like, you probably want dock for protection line near the wash area, is what I would assume, yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah, not, not starting at the H Road, just in the area of interest.
Okay. All right, and so the land trust part, is that, that's gonna be part of the second sidewalk, probably, okay.
Yeah, I doubt we'll even really do go in there much. I think we'd be interested to see the entrance.
Mm-hmm.
And there really isn't.
Nothing going on.
A purview, or a purview at this point.
Right.
Probably won't walk that too thoroughly.
Okay.
That'd be a different project, wouldn't it?
All right, I'll get to work, Pat, thank you.
All right, next up would be, uh, West Shore Acres, West Shore Drive map, one twenty-eight lot zero zero seven dash zero zero one, application subdivision preliminary plan.
It's just the.
Any left shells to dry tonight, Bill, huh?
We just got this one, we got it right here.
Yeah.
Is this it? I do have it.
Just look at this one, this is your fake egg.
Okay.
That's not like this one right now, anyway.
No, we're doing subdivision.
That's what I was wanting, yeah, this.
Yeah, this is the way, I was just trying to make sure, cause I thought I didn't have it.
It's also our sidewalk.
So do we have, do we have papers for this?
You would have had them already.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't bring it with me, please.
I have one extra here, yeah.
Here you go.
Thank you.
What we tried to address for the three of us that were there was your concerns about the.
No, it's John's, John's.
Weird pool that showed up.
About the wet area.
Yeah.
It was dry.
Well, it was dry, but you could still feel it.
Yeah.
Moving on.
It looked, looked more like a little area where the water collects after a storm, but then it just.
Or a snowfall comes down, I think so.
It's kind of a gully, a pool area.
Intertraction area.
Yeah, then it, then it runs off down the hill. It's wet.
Nothing on the road. So I guess if most of the people have their paperwork out, I'll just quickly reintroduce for anybody watching it, that may not be familiar. Uh, so Joe Stanley with Lime Pro Land Surveying, I'm here representing the Matthews family. Um, they own just over eighteen acres at the intersection of West Shore Drive and Nicholas Lane, and the proposal, um, here is to create two two acre lots, um, out of that eighteen acres and, and leave the, rig it, the remaining fourteen plus acres kind of intact as one parcel. And basically create two conveyable two acre lots, um. Have had, um, wetland studies done on both of the proposed lots and, um, you know, have two passing test pit locations on both lots. Um, all of that has been submitted as part of our application packet. Just under, you know, the kind of the low spot that everybody's chattering about is, you know, just under where it says fourteen point two nine acres there. You can see on the version up there, I labeled two, two contour lines and that, yeah, kinda where the cursor is, that, uh, that shape is kind of the low spot on the lot, so you know, it does look like in certain, um, rain events that like, I think Gavin just phrased it well during the, the chat, you know, it's kind of a bit of an infiltration area where the water collects and then seeps into the sand and gravel below, uh, but that is the lowest spot, so even anybody trying to visualize it who wasn't here, that, that contour is roughly the shape of that depression. Um, I did check in CAD and, uh, it's about a hundred and ninety feet away for, at the closest point to the lot one that we're proposing. It's about a hundred and eighty feet, uh, away from that lot two that we're proposing over there, just if everybody's trying to get an idea of distances. You know, otherwise, I, I don't think there was, you know, there are two pretty straightforward lots, again, there's no wetlands, there's just kinda some rolling topography on, on both of the lots, um, but nothing, nothing too steep. Um, the lot one does have, which isn't shown there, but the lot one on the northerly side, um, does sorta have a, a driveway and cleared area already situated on the lot, you know, or the location where the driveway would, would go, it looks like somebody's kinda brush hogged and maintained that spot over the years. Yeah, I'm happy to answer any further questions anyone might have.
Funny, it looks like there's, so the mother lot is, is, is getting divided. And a section of it is getting landlocked from the rest of it, so to speak. You see what I'm saying? It almost looks like four lots on the map.
Yeah, absolutely, I kinda sort of anticipating this question, sometimes it's very easy for people to grasp and sometimes it's extremely difficult, I know when I started dealing with this as a surveyor, it was, I had to have the likes of Joe Lenkowski and everybody kind of explain it to me, but how, you know, how the state or how the law looks at it is the entire acre is eighteen point three acres. If we create those two lots, you know, we've created the two lots, but the remaining fourteen and a half acres, even if it's not touching in places, is still, you know, still owned by that original deed, it's still technically, even though it's not touching in one spot there, it's, it's still considered all part of one parent parcel, it was all still conveyed in the other deed. You know, we did set it up.
So new deed isn't being created for the far right hand?
Nope, that would, that would still be part of, you know, in the eyes of, of the town, in the eyes of, um, you know, state law, that would all still be part of that fourteen acre lot. Um, you know, we did set it up, so if they choose to come back in the future, there's two acres there and it'll be ready to go, but they sort of, um, they sort of just wanted to do these two lots because they, you know, they sort of, they have people interested in them, but they, you know, they didn't, I think they have the possibility of nine lots here, but they didn't, yeah, it would be nine lots, but they didn't wanna be tempted to get approval on them and sell them, their plan is actually try to keep, you know, a fair amount of this for a while, um, you know, we could have easily done test pits and, uh, and wetland study on that piece and, and added it as a third lot here, but I think, you know, they're kinda purposely trying to not make it easy to convey out at this point, cause they're, they're hoping to resist the temptation to sell it and keep, keep the remaining fourteen acres at this point. Well, we can, we, I kind of anticipated, I told my client, that might be the one thing that, you know, based on how things went out at that other project on Milton Rivers Road, I anticipated this might be the one thing that make, makes some eyes roll, so I mean, if it becomes an issue for anybody, we'll add it as a lot and make it part of the subdivision, make it easy to convey. Um, you know, all we need to do is really go do a couple test pits and, uh, we can add it as a third lot, it's just, we, that's not the desire of our client at this point in time.
It's a different issue though, because even though you say something was gonna be conveyed to another lot, you can't, you can't just let something float until it does, you know? So that's one, actually, as road furniture, it is a possible lot, the other one wouldn't have been a possible lot.
Right, no, yeah, you're correct.
It's a kind of, it's not, that's not apples to apples.
No, but again, this is.
No, but it's, it's similar where. But it's, it's similar where it's like, why isn't that, the question is, why isn't that actually a separate lot at this time?
Yep. No, I mean, even, even when this was, you know, if you want to take a, we've been working at this property for five years now, even if we want to take a step back, you know, you know, there were eight, ten years ago, there was, as, as the, the former hand-in property there was getting, you know, kind of conveyed off to different parties. We had looked at, you know, if pieces get conveyed here, or, you know, people losing a lot, gaining a lot, we'd sort of mapped out the future of what this piece, piece across the street that a different owner has, sort of mapped out the future of what this whole area could look like, and you're sort of looking at a result of, you know, a configuration of these two lots that doesn't hinder them in the future from coming back and, and trying to do a couple more if, if the need arises. But that's what it is, overall, there was a greater concept that they had had to be put together that I think showed nine lots in total in this corner. But at this point in time, they have no desire to do a nine lot subdivision here, they really just want to make the two, two acre pieces that are conveyable. But, you know, happy to provide any further information on, on either, yeah, I guess, either side of lot two there, if, if there's any concerns or anything the board would like to see.
Yeah, I'm curious about the road frontage for lot two. You've got, on the northern side, you've got two whatever, it's two hundred and seventy-four feet, so you've got enough distance there. But on this, for some reason, on the southern side, my thing is a hundred and sixty-three feet.
Down in that other, look at that little box that, I'm, I'm playing right here, Gavin.
Yeah.
It shows you your radius, it gives you another eighty-six point four five.
So that's just, yeah.
Right, so the hundred and sixty-three and change is a straightaway there in the frontage, and then the arc length is the remaining frontage within that curved area, so you would add those two up to get over the two hundred and fifty foot requirement.
Now, in Nicholas Lane, is that a town adopted road or?
Private.
It's a private road?
Yes, it's a private road and the.
And what condition is it in? I mean, I, we should probably schedule a sidewalk and look.
Oh, yeah, I did it yesterday.
Oh, you guys did that?
Yeah, it's, it's a good, decent road, there was two cars that went by us and then.
It has to be up to town standards for that two hundred and fifty feet to be applicable, you can't just use any back road.
I had Will letting me go out there.
Yeah, you did, you took care of it.
By the year, yeah, it's just before they even came in front of us. They wanted, before they even started through this whole subdivision, they wanted to make sure it met town standards. So I went out there, because that's not my thing, so I went up with Will and he verified that it met.
So you're happy with that, okay. So that would suffice for the odd parcel as well, because it is a twenty feet wide, blah, blah, blah?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, you guys are ahead of me then, if you did the sidewalk yesterday, that would, yeah.
It almost was.
Nothing stuck out.
But I made it.
And we checked out the area that John was concerned with and pretty much there's no, no water there, it's just collection, collection points after a storm.
Mm-hmm.
But it's all. Didn't see anything that stood out.
They did a nice hack and job, they moved out once, you can see it.
Oh, nice.
Thank you, I'll tell the field crews they did a good job.
Relatively straight for drop the head to go, but.
So as far as I can tell, we're on preliminary plan at this point?
This letter of authoriz, authorization is to himself, shouldn't that be Tyler? Isn't Scott giving Tyler?
Yeah, I totally, I totally see what you're saying there, it should have declared us there as the agent on that page. You know, we are listed on the, on the previous page
Yeah.
as representatives for the project, but, but yes, that second line of that letter of authorization, it certainly would be nice if it declared our name right there, and certainly something we can modify and bring to the next meeting, just to cross that T, yep. I've actually got one with me that.
I think we should have the consultant look at this.
I'd be okay with that. Yeah. Do we want to do that? Do we want to ask for Jason to send it to?
Ben?
Yeah.
Well, we could do all these, yeah. Either one, do you?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks cheaper.
Yeah.
That's what I was gonna say. CJ.
Right, right.
Is he the southern main guy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there something in particular that the board is, is questioning, or are your reason to send it out? You know, it does, in my opinion, it seems pretty straightforward with the existing acreage, existing road frontage, or, you know, if there's anything we need to address, I certainly, if you end up needing to do it, that's fine, but I don't know if there's anything that's making you uncomfortable to feel like that's necessary.
Well, in my opinion, it never hurts to get an expert's opinion. You, you've certainly done this way more than us.
So we'd have to create a, like a, an account, right? Which we haven't done yet, correct?
Right.
Yeah. Is this all in the rural zone, the whole?
Yeah.
Do we want to read through the preliminary, or?
Yeah, we can.
Anything stick out during the hour?
The bidders have been notified.
Should have done that for the sidewalk, right?
Should have.
Yeah. Did we do that? We don't have to notify the bidders of the sidewalks now? Oh, okay, all right.
We have to notify them that the application's been
Submitted.
Submitted. So that has to happen. Application is complete?
I don't think it's quite complete because we gotta get letter of authorization properly.
Right.
I mean, it's probably close.
Close.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, I wouldn't say it is, but.
Okay, so the specific thing is that document fixed? Anything else you think's missing?
I'm just curious where the verbiage is that tells us we can do this and, and with the, you know, three, four lot kind of thing.
Okay, yeah, I can either try to come up with something, or if it ends up being a sticking point, we'll add it to the plan as a lot, it's not a big deal at all.
Right. Well, so then, in that case, you would write a separate deed for that lot at that time?
If they choose to convey it, we would write a deed at that point, we don't, you know, we don't, like even these two lots, we don't necessarily write a deed for that lot
Yeah.
until they go to sell it, whether it's
Okay.
two days, two years. You know, we have all the mathematics and the mentioning, just at that point, at that point, we would probably need to do a couple soils test pits and have that particular area looked at for wetlands, I don't believe there are any, but we need that confirmation. But, you know, so we were hoping to just do these two lots, but if it, if it comes down to that being a sticking point, we will we can add it again.
I'm just wondering where the verbiage is, like, that we could reference that would tell us that we can do it like that.
Yeah, I'll see if I can dig something up too before the next meeting to help explain that, like I said, it took me a couple times of seeing it before I got comfortable with it myself, so your questions about it are not a surprise at all.
Yeah.
You've already notified the road commissioner, go tell the fire chief and the superintendent of schools. We got the dwelling number, we got the roadways. N A.
Right, and then the, we can hold a public hearing on the preliminary plan, or we can wait till the final plan to hold the hearing. Or we got two hearings.
Wait for the final. Tell them to wait on the final plan for a public hearing.
That's what I would suggest, but is there a reason to have a preliminary?
I think it depends on the scale and the, scale of the project and the interest of the public, so to speak.
It's just two blocks.
Right, if we don't feel like it's a confrontation of project or anything, that's probably not, not what happened to hearings.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary. Final draw.
If the, whatever the board decides is fine with me, if, you know, as far as my input would go on it, I would rather have the public hearing sooner in the process than later, because this is a plan that I don't anticipate will change much from preliminary to final, however, if the public does provide some input that may sway the configuration of these lots, I'd rather get it ironed out now than after we thought the final plan was almost done. And then, you know, we're kind of making changes at the eleventh hour, so to speak, but again, whatever the board decides to do is fine, but that's my opinion on if, if you're trying to decide whether to do it sooner rather than later, I, I would love to just get it done to hear if anybody has any, you know, hear what their comments are, really.
Well, if we do it early, we don't have to do another one with the final plan. Right?
I'm not sure. I just remember the, Lee Jay said that we want to vote that it's complete before we have the hearing usually. But you can have a hearing ahead just to get more information. But I don't see it right.
Well, it required submissions and then on page ten, and it says, if the board decided to hold a public hearing within thirty days of the receipt of a completed application. Well, I guess that's if the prelims, like maybe what you're thinking is if the public says you could change this, if you go on the final, then you could have another public hearing.
Yeah, I feel like if it's substantially changed, we'd probably show.
Yeah.
Right, if, if a change is going to end up as a result of the hearing, I always want to hear about it as soon as I can, just to make the changes, get it back into you and, you know, make that correction, you know, try to start it moving forward, you know, I'd, I'd rather know in, in three weeks than in two months, just trying to get it finished at some point, that's all.
And if there's changes, we could have a second public hearing just to make sure, if they come back to make sure.
Yeah, if it's something significant. Hold this issue with the fourth law figured out before we have the hearing personally.
Like quirky piece?
Yeah, just even if it's just the consultant signing off on it, so to speak, that would be enough for me, but I, because, because if it's gonna be, you know, a whole nother law added to it, then we would obviously have to have another public hearing anyway. I'd like to know, you know, get that sort of result, I mean, that's the biggest, but I, I don't know. Or if we could get that. I kind of think we should either wait for, wait for, you know, information saying where it is that we can reference it, we're allowed to do it like that, or, or for it to be added to the plan as a separate law.
Do you know what the state statute number that we can reference?
I, I don't, I, I believe if I dig hard enough in the files, we have, you know, a similar situation where we had to explain this to the Sanford Planning Board like seven or eight years ago, so I, if we, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but I, there's one particular situation that I'm thinking of, or if I dig that out, you know, where a different board had to go through the same process, it might help, you know, expedite the, the process of everybody learning about it and being comfortable with it, so I can, I can definitely before the next meeting, try to dig up some information that would help everybody, help everybody with this issue, like I said, it's not a surprise at all that we're talking about it right now. But I can, I can definitely try to make sure for that next meeting that I have more information for you to consider in regards to that issue.
Well, if we, if we did it at the next meeting, then at that meeting, we could settle on having a public hearing. Right, it's kind of a two-week bump, but.
So I, which is fine, because we should, I, I'm fine with waiting till the final, that'd be.
Well, I, I'm, I'm kind of okay with doing it early. And, you know, once we find out, we get something that makes us comfortable and do it early, and then if there's no significant comment or change from the public, we don't need to do it again at the final.
So you want to do the public hearing when?
Well, I think we'd schedule it at the next meeting, Joe's gonna do some digging.
Yeah, because if Joe doesn't find anything, I think at the next meeting, we'd have to vote whether we want to go through the consultant to figure it out or not.
Right.
That's fair enough.
Give them a chance to...
Yep, I mean, give me that two-week chance to try to do that. I, that sounds very reasonable to me.
If Joe comes up with that information, do you want me to get the letters out to the abusers?
Do you want you to do that?
For the first, before the next meeting, if he actually has or should I, or would you like me to just wait till the next meeting? Because I need seven days, this one says seven days in the paper, which I can meet that anytime, but then 10 days for the abusers, which probably got the letter tomorrow, I can, I can meet that. Because it's certified. But that would be first. Might get picked up as a holiday.
Can't we notify the abusers? Step one.
Yeah.
Step two, in two weeks, establish you know, 10 days or whatever for the public hearing.
Right, I still have to notify the abusers of the public hearing.
Oh, so you're trying to say this is...
It's, so I'd be sending out two different, two different certified letter. That's kind of where, that's what I'm saying, yeah, so a copy of the notice will be sent in first-class mail to the applicant and applicant, at least 10 days prior to the hearing. Letting them know about the public hearing.
Well, do we want to have a public hearing before the next meeting?
We should contact MMA, do the public hearing, or the same guy.
Say that again, Pat.
I think we should contact MMA about this question about this lot. Shouldn't be a third lot. And set the, set the public hearing, because we'll be a little bit further ahead instead of... There's a phone call, we'll answer that question.
You're optimistic.
I'm, I'm optimistic too, that at a minimum, I can get a letter from attorney stating that per such and such a interpretation of the state law, that that's how this would be looked at. I'm I'm pretty confident that I, when I come back in two weeks, I'll have something that makes everybody quite comfortable with this.
Well, it's scheduled. I say we schedule it. If that's the case.
Send the public hearing on the first as well.
Yeah, you can send out the abuser thing, we'll, we'll get the information, we'll have a public hearing. You okay again?
Yeah.
All right. Public hearing on the first. They'll bring in a letter of some sort for that quirky piece.
Yep, I'll, I'll bring in something that, that helps everyone with that issue. Again, hindsight, I could...
Are we gonna have Jason call? Because if we, if we are, we need to set up some sort of account, or we have to get money from the applicant to pay for the unless Jason can do it, do it quick enough that we don't get charged somehow.
I can maybe just call up, but this situation, I can call our town attorney. Probably be just as easy as calling and submitting a plan and see if this is a feasible situation. Because he's, Landy's attorney, he deals with this stuff, titles and deeds and things like that. And I didn't, I can do that tomorrow morning.
I love the idea, because the same gentleman is the one who taught me how to, about this interpretation 10 to 15 years ago, so I...
You find out right away if there's any glaring concerns.
Yep, absolutely. I, I fully support that, that Jason reaching out to the, the town attorney on this.
It'd be cheaper.
Right, right. Not, not sure.
You know, do you, do you want something in writing, or are you filing just?
I just, I'm curious where the statute is that I can reference and see in writing where it tells people they can do it like that.
Okay, I'll see if I can get the number off of...
Yeah, pretty much tell them the situation and see if there's any concerns that he has.
And if so, what is the recommendation would be?
You know, Jason has this, the PD, the same PDF we're looking at there too, and I fully support him sending that right along to him. Let him take a look at it.
Look at this.
Yep.
Public hearing for first.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we hold a public hearing for the preliminary plan of
West Shore Acres.
Second.
Oh, second.
Wrong favor. Motion passed, fine. All right.
Excellent, I appreciate it, everyone. Thank you.
All right, new business, Michael Lindberg. Tammy Murray, 168 Granbury View Road map, 110 lot, 015 application for the greatest project ever. How you doing?
How are you?
Good. He wanted to say your name and stuff.
Sure, I didn't know if you wanted to wait to get the thing up on the screen first, or?
Trying to write stuff down and...
I think that goes with it. It's something else.
All right, guys, so my name's Dave Hart. I'm with Street Design. I'm representing the Murrays. I'm the architect for the project. And so, have you had a chance to look at the documents?
I just got mine tonight, so...
Okay. Yeah. All right, so just briefly, what we, we have submitted is the existing site plan. And then there is a proposed site plan, an existing floor plan, and then proposed cottage. So what we're doing or proposing to do is knock down the existing cottage and also the shed, that's to the left of the cottage. The cottage right now is sitting on Pierce, no foundation or anything like that. And then the new configuration, if you want to go to the, probably the... Yeah, probably the easiest thing to look at, shows a, a simple rectangular box which represents the new cottage. And we're suggesting or proposing that it's moved back 11 feet from where it is now. So you can see the dotted line that represents where the footprint of the cottage used to be and then where the new cottage is. The shed is also going away. They are also proposing to lift the cottage up and put a full frost wall and crawl space underneath it, within the three-foot regulations.
Is that a deck out in front of the proposed cottage?
There's a little, little deck out in front there, and then that kind of like squiggly space right now is a ground-level patio. And at the moment, they would like to keep that ground-level patio, but if that's something that needs to be removed, then they would do that.
Well, that's one of the things I was gonna ask for. I didn't see in the package a lot, lot coverage calculation.
It's 31.1%.
It's an expansion.
No, no, this is the lot coverage.
Do we have any pictures? We can, like, go real images? Just give us an idea of what, what the proposed, uh you know, what the driveway looks like and stuff like that. Is it a paved driveway coming down?
There's a portion of the property that's raised and has a retaining wall. So that's kind of what you're seeing on the, in the middle picture. You're sort of standing the road's right behind you, and you're standing on this sort of elevated spot.
Yeah.
There's a retaining wall, a stone retaining wall that starts on the left. Looks like there's a canoe right there and kind of goes around. You can kind of see it there, less at the water, but so that's the existing, yeah. You can see to the right that curved area. So a portion of that retaining wall has to be removed because the footprint of the new cottage is overlapping that. And the, the, right there, right in front of the cottage, that's, I guess, what you would consider the driveway. It's just a gravel area.
And that's the patio up front there?
Right, yeah, there you go, there, there it is.
And so you had the numbers?
Yeah, I do, I do have the numbers. I can provide the lot coverage if you...
What's it, just, we'll, we'll like to see that, but just out of curiosity, what is it?
Oh, um...
Going, existing and going to?
Yeah, so the existing is 31.1% lot coverage. I don't have the new lot coverage just yet, but obviously I'll provide that for you.
And can you provide the deed when you provide?
Sure.
Looks like the lot's pretty flat overall.
Yes, except for that, that kind of corner where they, they propose a new septic system, upgrading our septic system. And that's where it's gonna be located, and that's been approved.
Where is existing? Can you go back to the drawing and show where the existing septic is?
Probably with the existing site plan, the first sheet. Just scroll down. It's in, you can sit in the same area.
On the upper left, I was thinking. Upper left here, part of the...
Yeah. There's a tank. Does it show on the site plan there?
Just a little, Jason.
Say that again, John?
Scroll down, no, the other way. Yeah, okay. I don't see it.
Yeah, it doesn't indicate where the tank is.
This is weird. Is this proposed septic, is that pointing there? Where is new drilled well?
Actually, no.
Existing is up here.
It does have it on the last page. Showing it way up top.
This could be the top of the wall right here. Area.
And he's got it down here on the right. Am I, am I missing something?
What did you say, Pat?
I was looking at this drawing here.
I'm looking at the, that's the shed. Septic design. If the lake is at the bottom, on the second page, it says septic, and I can't read.
Area, I think it says the septic area.
It says septic area. Is that the existing septic area northwest corner? If this is...
It's the proposed, that's the proposed septic area.
Well, according to the...
But this one has the proposed septics on the...
Like southeast.
This is a new plan. This isn't existing. This isn't even in the ground yet. This is a non-tertiary, this is what they're proposing to do with the construction.
So the new is going into the upper right-hand corner?
Upper left-hand corner as you look at this site plan.
But that, this, yeah, that's true, you should, you should get that.
I don't know, I'm confused.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's right up in here.
This one says it's... Right, but this, these years, it's going to something here. Or not that far down, but like, it's probably right above here, Jason.
Like, it's not even on the wall.
I'm not sure why I'm there.
Yeah, you're right, it's not even. So there should be
Yeah, well, no, there's an arrow to put it up there. Right, so...
It's about to be under the driveway.
Right, the other one says it's in this other...
Right.
I have no doubt. No doubt.
You have no what?
No doubt that he's, that he's designed a good system. It's just a little confusing as to is it to the right or is it to the left?
Yeah, I don't know why that's on there, why.
And where is the existing?
We need it on this, right?
Yeah, we can, we can have him show the existing septic tank on the plan.
So it's just a tank, it doesn't have a field or anything right now?
No, it has a field. But again, I'm assuming it's, when they show it, it's gonna be up in that area, that left-hand side of the site.
So you're keeping that field?
It's gonna be an all-new.
Oh, so that's gonna be removed.
The roof deck's going on lake side, the lake side. The roof then?
Yep.
That's on the lake, it's in the lake.
Yeah, it's to the, to the side of the within the footprint of the house.
Okay, yeah, no, I, yeah, I see it on it, it's just one of it.
Yeah.
You meet, you meet the 30% on your expansion, on your proposed cottage, but you don't in the volume.
Yeah, we're still struggling with that, but we gotta basically make the roof float lower. And that's the piece that's been the most difficult.
But it's your intention to get that down to, okay. Get it condition. You wanna go see it?
I have the tank being right behind us.
Under the driveway pretty much?
Yeah, and the second, second map is showing the septic area up in that.
Well, the tank could be there, but the leach field might be up.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's the septic area, I, I thought would be the leach field.
Yes.
Pretty much where the other one was, just actually further. I'd like to see leach field, septic tank.
Of the proposed one or the new, other ones there?
Of the proposed.
I think if you look at the last pages, you can see the chambers are gonna be in the driveway.
Right, yeah.
I don't have a question anymore about where it is.
Yeah, I mean, they usually, usually put it on the plan.
Right.
Just one of our limiting factors in moving the building, so we like to have it on there.
It doesn't really look as much on there. It's going backwards.
It's already moving back.
Yeah, yeah, 11 feet back.
Right, what's your existing distance?
It's not noted there, I noted it on the sketch that we have, on the site plan, like 39, it's moving back, so now one corner's 39 feet, the other one's 46.
The edge of race sign.
You can see right there on the right and left-hand side.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
What is it?
39, 46.
Do you know what the distance is gonna be from the end?
Those are the, those are the...
You could just add that.
It's not gonna make that, but you and I spoke about that.
This says 173 feet from that.
It's .17.
Yeah. Top boundary, I don't know what that's...
Yeah.
Road is, yeah, yeah, he's like 200 feet.
So right now, the right-hand corner of the dotted box there where the house, the cottage sits now, where you see the 39-foot dimension?
Yeah.
If you take 11 feet away from that, you're at 28 feet existing.
No, but he does say you need to get 11 feet somewhere, I did read that.
Yeah. This is the end.
That's, that's new, it's basically a little step, there are sliders there, four sliders, a landing and then steps down.
He said they'd take it out if we didn't like it.
Yeah, that's ridiculous, I have nothing.
Well, we need to see the lot coverage calc, calculation.
Uh, yeah.
Oh, we've gotta figure out the volume.
Yeah, it's already...
Yeah, the volume is... Solution to the volume, the perverse surface.
calculation.
calculation.
A deed.
Septic on the plan.
Yeah, and septic on the plan.
Then you want what the septic?
Septic on the...
Oh, almost, almost.
You wanna put the well on it too, so we know where...
And the well.
Yeah, and the well. The well as well.
Sure.
The well.
You can just put those on the electronic version, or you guys can use it for it.
Yeah.
It should be fine.
Does the slate patio stain or no?
Excuse me?
The slate patio, is that stained?
They'd like to keep it if we could, like, of course, that's governed a little bit on lot coverage, right? So I guess we'd like to keep it if we can, but if we have to get rid of it, remove it?
Make the notes.
Yeah, it's saying they got two square feet of...
Cause they got two.
Falling thing.
Aluminum dock, and then this is, they're both aluminum, one was wooden, isn't this wooden?
That, this thing.
You guys got anything else you wanna put on the plan?
No.
I'm just noticing they have two docks on the plan.
I see a wooden dock and concrete stuff.
Two, two aluminum docks.
Yeah, there's a picture of that that you have.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure we're only supposed to have one dock per residence.
That's, so that one, that one in the middle, the middle picture is the bigger cutout?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you see it? That's the other one, yeah. There you go, yeah.
The big one, according to this.
That's the concrete pier.
Yeah.
Can I read there?
Yeah.
That goes over there.
It's not really something we'd necessarily take care of, but Jason would, looks at those sort of things, I think, probably think we're only supposed to have one. One dock per...
For residence.
That's outside my focus.
Yeah, that's kind of where we're all at right now.
We need a motion for the site walk. We don't need a motion for site walk. And you captured the things we wanted, right?
Yeah, deed, which, I can print that up in two seconds, I've just done it right now too, septic and well on the site plan, lot coverage sheet, and just, I had something else I'm adding in there. And I'll say...
And the volume.
Volume and volume.
Volume. Proposed volume needs to come down just...
Is that on the sheet?
No, what it says is 270.8 cubic feet over. So they're working that out with, trying to change the pitch of the roof or something like that, I mean, that's not a whole lot of...
No, they're close.
Yeah, you are, some...
What's that?
Yeah, we'll see you on the first at 5:00 PM.
Okay.
Or site, whatever.
Or someone else? I'll have to check my calendar, but I'll, you know, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, it's coming up.
I wanted to ask the, are you folks the neighbors? I don't know if they were...
Who was interested in this one?
Are you the neighbors or?
Yeah, I'm the father.
Okay.
And some of his...
Yeah, we're not gonna have any comments about it now, but...
Some of his information is incorrect. When is gonna be the public hearing?
There'll be the site walk is coming up.
They don't do public hearings for...
Yeah, we want to do a public hearing.
But if you come to the meeting after the public hearing, you can speak at that time.
No, there's the site walk and then the meeting after the site walk. So you can come in on the first after the site walk and have you say then?
So come on first?
Yes, and the meeting starts at 6:00.
Is it encroaching on your property?
Excuse me?
Is it encroaching on your property?
We can't talk about it without, we can't talk about it.
Yeah, we can't, but it's at 3:00 P. right now, we can go back to it. I can't see how we go back, I'm at 4:00 and still, can't see anything.
Right, well, we can't talk about it right now, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Henning Projects, Camp East Shore Drive, Camp Kitter.
Camp Kitter?
Well, that's all, it's right here.
Kitter.
Camp Kitter, on 14 East Shore Drive, and then John Palazzati. Jared's away, ready.
Ending outcome, a state review, roll it in there, pretty much, right?
Oh, no, that's it.
I'll make a motion, will you, Jared?
A second?
All in favor? If I have nothing? Alright, thank you.